All right, I think we're ready.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. I'd like to call our meeting this evening to order. I have 6 o'clock. Roll call, please.
Kathy Patnood.
Here.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Here.
Donna Coloney.
Here.
James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Levis.
Here.
Lori Andries.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So I'd like us all to have a moment of silence as we consider what's before us this evening. So if Mr. Pearson, if you could do us the honor of reading the mission of Coventry Public Schools.
Yes. The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number two, the celebration. Mr. Levis, I'll let you take that.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Patnood. I just thought it's appropriate to spend a little time. This is our 11th week. It seems, I don't know what it seems like, so I think that's an individual reflection, but I am so just amazed. Again, I don't want to misrepresent how challenging this is and for families, for students, for staff, for our community at large, but I cannot tell you how impressed I am with our school community and how supportive and the willingness that exists amongst almost everybody I run into. And I think it's worth taking a moment to reflect and to allow people to share their thoughts. Again, I'd like to say it's going to get easier as we get into the summer, but I don't see that. But I think it's important now to step and just say, you know, reflect on these 11 weeks and how this was really thrown at us and how people have worked together. Again, like I say, not to be too redundant, but willingness. And I'm so impressed with this community. You know, I've said that I've often been puzzled sometimes by actions that I've seen in this community, and that's just my opinion. But as superintendent, I am so grateful for just the support that despite the challenges that each one of us face, right? Everybody's life is so, so unique in terms of the variables and how they're interfacing with your day-to-day existence, your family, your responsibility, work, or to others. But we've just come together and I'm so proud. And I just wanted an opportunity to publicly, for us as a school community, to be able to put words on what people have done in terms of how they've risen to this challenge. And again, the challenge is still in front of us, but I just wanted to take a moment as hopefully with the school committee to just to say a few words and thank you to, you know, like I said, this is everybody. Everybody in our community. We have teaching assistants who are delivering, on top of what else they're doing, they're delivering 15 lunches during every day to families and students in need. So our custodians are working so hard so that when we do get back in the buildings, people are proud. You know, and our buildings are old, and we'll talk about them later on tonight, but you know, I can say everybody that's working hard. And the committee too, I appreciate your support. You know, I watch other meetings, you know, obviously that says a lot about my life, but I watch other districts and we're not divisive. We have professional conversations, but I think we're as polarized as we've ever been since I've been in Coventry, and that's important. It's leadership across the board. So that's all I have to say. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. And you know, the journey's still in progress. There's going to be many forks ahead of us, but you know, I believe as long as we continue working together and overcoming the obstacles, we will be successful. And we may redefine what success is, but I just wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. I think I will ask the school committee individual if you have any comments or to what Mr. Levis just said. I think the first one this, tonight will be Mr. Pearson. Is there any comment you'd like to make in regards to Mr. Levis's previous conversation?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Coloney, is there anything you'd like to contribute?
I just think that, you know, I think everybody's done a wonderful job. It really, you know, it's challenging across the board. And I just, I think everybody's done well.
Thank you. Mr. Murray.
I don't have anything to add at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Florio.
I have something to say. I think Mr. Levis, the school administrators, the principals, the teachers in the entire community has really helped us through the pandemic. Mr. Levis in particular has been working 12-hour days. I know teachers have been working very hard from their, for virtual learning. I see the ceremonies. I see the signs in town being put, being put on people's lawns. I see kids graduating for the award ceremony. It was just awesome. It was a great award ceremony. And we're doing the best we can with the tools we have. And it gives us a lot to be proud of, especially as a school committee, because we're part of it. We're part of this miracle that's actually happened during this time. And I believe the families and the children and the community is grateful for what we've done, what we've all done. So that's my comment, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Levis, for everything you do.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. I would just like to follow up with pretty much the same. We thank everyone involved.
I think Ms. Patnood froze there.
Really good work has been done. And I just want to thank everyone who's been part of this. It hasn't been easy. And we're not done yet. We have so much more to go. And I just wish the best for this community. I wish the best for our state and our country. Pandemics like this, I've never lived through. I doubt there's anyone really, there might be some older citizens that have lived through one previously, but certainly the guidance, the resilience, the ability for people to come together and unite, you know, with their families, with their schools and community has been awe-inspiring. So I do want to thank everyone for their part. And if I can say it, look forward to our plan on how we reopen schools in the fall. That being said.
Ms. Patnood, can I just add one thing? Do you mind?
Sure.
Just I was, you know, didn't want to take away thunder from everybody, but obviously, just as important as the individuals I mentioned, our students, you know, our parents and caregivers, because like our teachers, they're juggling so many different scenarios. And, you know, they're, they're incredible part of the success that we've had, you know, amongst the challenges that we obviously have. But without their ability and willingness, we wouldn't be in the situation we're at where we can actually start to assess our last 11 weeks and look at what does that mean in terms of us moving forward. So I just wanted to thank them for all of their efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. And I'm not seeing any hands raised from the public. If anybody did want to make a comment, if you could indicate and raise your hand, we'll let you comment on this particular.
I don't see any hands raised, no.
Did you, did I get cut off?
Yes. No, I didn't hear, but I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
Yes, number five, sorry.
That's okay.
It's the LED lighting for Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle. So if you'd like to start this.
Yeah, I'll start off. In fact, I am going to apologize. I put up a document. There's two documents up there. Mr. Murphy, if you can put up the document that we talked about, the EW Energy Solutions. The first document I put up was, it shouldn't have been up there. That was if we were going to have them installed. This is just for the LED light bulbs that Mr. Drummond had talked about last time, but it wasn't on the agenda. We want to just purchase the light bulbs. And I don't know if you can go to the second page, Mr. Murphy, it kind of shows more. So basically, this will pay for itself in less than a year, that we will get the bulbs, we will put them in. The reason we did that is because of down the road with the middle school, if we decide to do any projects, renovation, construction, we can still use the bulbs. And you can see, there's a, the cost of the bulbs are $28,000, I think $539. We get a discount of over $11,000. So the savings in the first year, I think it was presented to me that probably in, you know, six to nine months, we'll cover the cost of these bulbs. So I told Mr. Drummond, I don't, didn't believe I needed them tonight. We had talked a little bit about it. So I'm suggesting or recommending that, you know, we approve this. Again, it'll be the same arrangement as we had before. It'll be on our bill, and it'll pay for itself in less than, like, I believe you said, six to nine months. And that's all I, you know, if there's any questions about this, I don't want to say it's a no-brainer, but to me, in terms of getting the bulbs and the savings that are, we're expected to have are significant, so.
So Craig, just to be, I can give a little bit of specifics. We're basically going to be replacing 28 watts for instance with 14-watt LEDs. Instant energy savings. And I mean, we wanted to get it part as of the last group that you approved. It just wasn't ready. My department will put them in. I don't need my electricians to do it. The custodians can do it. So this is, this is really an easy one, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Thank you.
Did you forget my name, Kathy?
Yes, I had a brain fart. So if there are any questions from the committee, I'll just go right through us. Mr. Pearson, did you have any questions?
I think we went into this in a good amount of detail during the last meeting, so I'm comfortable with the information as it's presented. So no questions for me at this time.
Great, thank you very much. Mrs. Coloney?
None for me, thank you.
Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray, are you there?
He is not here.
We lost him. Must have, his internet must have fallen off. Mr. Florio, anything?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions at this time either, except to thank everyone for their work on this. So that being said, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the lighting for Allen Shawn's Feinstein School through National Grid be approved as recommended by the superintendent.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the committee, or are there any hands raised in the? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke, are you back? Nope. Donna Coloney.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
So I just want to just comment that if, if and when Luke is able to get his internet back, I would like to give him the opportunity to maybe comment on this particular motion. And so we'll, we'll reserve that till maybe when he gets back online. So I guess we can move to number six, personnel layoff. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this one?
Sure. This, this layoff is to make room for music position, that we need to lay off the least senior music teacher. So that's the reason why this layoff is taking place.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to lay off Norman Rosenfield, 0.9 music teacher for the district?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a sec on that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Roll call vote, please.
Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
No.
Luke Murray, no. Donna Coloney.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to number seven, which is the administrative contracts discussion. Mr. Levis, I believe.
Sure. So I put this on the agenda. I wanted to give an opportunity to, you know, I was watching the town council meeting when they were presenting the council's budget, and at one point, Dr. Dixon had asked Mr. Wazika if he included raises. And, you know, she complimented the administrators on how they worked. And, you know, he, he had indicated, you know, due to the times, that there were not raises. And I wanted to publicly indicate, and also give the, obviously, the council, the council, the school committee an opportunity to discuss this, but that we've had a conversation, I believe all the council members, the school committee members. Remember when we had revised the contracts, we had raised it prior to my getting here, there was a year where there were a lot of inconsistent raises, and I'm sure, you know, I know there were reasons why. But we tried to build a system where, you know, prior to that, I've had individuals that are on our administrative staff that went seven years without raises. So we tried to build in the contract. We did the first years, and then this year is to be determined. And so I had a conversation with our administrators, and we recognized the times we're in, how challenging they are. And, you know, I asked them that I felt it's important that we tabled the conversation for the raises. And they were in agreement. And I wanted to bring that public, because I think that's important. You know, there was a lot of conversation last year about administrators and how we're top-heavy. And, you know, I can tell you, we have 20 certified administrators. And look at districts around the state and compare. We just happen to have a lot of individuals that don't fall into the typical administrative category, but they're not union members. And maybe in other districts, they might be, but they're not here. So I wanted to, you know, but I also wanted to turn that into a positive. And as I, you know, if you ever watch any of my videos, I always talk about, I'm always thanking everybody for the work that they do. But I want this community to know, and the school committee to know, that our administrators are on call 24/7. These are incredibly challenging times. I had a conversation with them the other day. And just saying that, the, the summer is going to be really difficult, and I need to encourage people to take care of themselves. You know, self-care is so important in these times of crisis. But I also, anybody that works with me knows that, when you're on vacation or day off, I really try to honor that. You know, I've worked in places where I'm gone five minutes and, you know, they call me. And, and I try to really respect that, so that people are on vacation. But I said to them, I may have to break my own beliefs this summer, because it's going to be all hands on deck. We need, you know, I may need to talk to Brad or Fred or Diddy's about a situation, and they be on a week vacation. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for everything they've done. I, like I always say, I've never had a success that's truly my own, but that's never been more true than these times in working with our administrative team. I can tell you, I've had countless emails and running into people in town telling me about, you know, they've had questions or concerns and how the administrators at both central office in our building base have been so responsive to their needs. And hopefully, you've received a few complaints. I've received very few complaints. And when I do, and I follow up, they resolve. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank them. But I wanted the public to know, we've had those conversations. And we understand the times we're in, but I couldn't do this without them. We've had changes in administration over the years, but we have an incredible, strong team that is able to put others' needs before theirs. And I just wanted to thank every single one of them. And that's, but I brought it up. I wanted that. And again, obviously, it's on the table for conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Mr. Pearson, did you want to respond in any way?
Thank you to you and your team for being responsive and understanding the current economic situation that's happening in this state. It's going to be a tough year for everyone. There's a new article out today that income tax collections for the month of April in Rhode Island are down 66%. And I think they anticipated some kind of impact, but not to that scale. So, so it is greatly appreciated by myself, I'm sure by the rest of the committee, though I won't speak for them. And I'm sure by the taxpayers that we're really being conscientious about what's happening. And, and people are willing, people love this community so much, they're willing to take that kind of personal sacrifice. Many of us have done that privately in our private lives also. So it's nice to hear and, and understand that it is not an ideal situation, and normally such a thing wouldn't even be on the table. But I think this year's circumstances are unprecedented. As Kathy said, none of us have lived through anything like this. This is a generation or two, you know, removed from, from a crisis like this. So thank you to you and your team for putting this on the table and proactively discussing this. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I don't know if Luke is back. I don't think so. Actually, I think it's Donna anyway. So Mrs. Coloney, did you want to say anything?
I just want to echo what James said. It really was appreciated. And, you know, it's, it's something that everybody stepped up and gave a little bit, whether, you know, of themselves. And this right here just shows that, you know, you got a great team. And you're willing to do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coloney. And Mr. Florio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Levis, you've assembled quite a team. I've been on, I'm going, I've been on, I've been on the school committee for six years now, going on seven. And I've seen a lot of changes from when I first began. And what you've done is remarkable, with the people you brought in, with the administrators you brought in. You brought in some top-notch people. I don't know how you did it. Sadmignarelli, Lori Andries, John Anderson, Ann Coward, Brad Wilson. You brought in some awesome. Fred Shockett, who was already here, stayed on. You brought in some great people. You really have. And you really, really have been a true leader to them, and to us. And they're, they're remarkable. And I just wish, I wish this never came along, but I think we've learned a lesson from this in terms of loving each other and community. And you showed both, Mr. Levis, especially when you hand out those lunches over at the, over at the park, to the families that need it the most. So no child, we've no child behind Mr. Levis. And neither does your team. And I thank you as a school committee person. I thank you. And I thank everybody on the school committee. Thank you for what you've done. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. My, my only comment is that I truly appreciate the fact that your administrative team, Mr. Levis, has in fact discussed this and agreed that they would not receive a raise this year. Nobody likes to hear that. And like Mr. Pearson said, there have been several instances, I'm sure of the people listening, knowing that they have been asked not to have a raise this year. I know for a fact, my own job at Brown University, they have basically said, we will not get a raise this year. And that's not very common. I've been at Brown for 44 years, and I think it's only happened once before. We typically always do get a raise. So we are in tough financial, a very tough financial predicament. And I'm just really grateful that the administrative team, even though they've worked probably more than maybe ever in their lives as an administrator, our building administrators, our central team, they've been going great guns, full steam ahead since this all started. And like you say, Mr. Levis, there's a very good chance that even during their vacation this summer, they will be called by the team saying, you know, what should we do about this? What should we do about that? So we're, we're in tough times. And, and I just want to thank everyone for all of the work that they have done and will continue to do without a, without a pay raise. So I want to thank everyone, and I'm so respectful for their contribution. That being said, I see Mr. Murray is back. Mr. Murray, did you want to speak to, I know you didn't hear the conversation probably, but first of all, you know, did you just lose your internet?
Nah, I had a computer meltdown. So I lost my internet, lost my computer, rebooted the whole bit. So I apologize. But I'm back, and I have a stable connection now, so.
Well, good. I did tell the committee when you weren't here for the vote on the LED lighting, that I would reserve the right to ask you if you had any, we already voted on it, but I assume that you did in fact agree with this proposal. And if you had any questions or comments, I give you the floor.
Yeah, I talked to the superintendent today about it. It made sense to me, using in-house labor to do the relamping. And I had no further comments on it. I was in agreement with it.
All right, thank you. So I guess we can move on to number eight, the necessity of school construction. Mr. Levis, did you want to begin this?
I'll hand it over quickly to, to Mr. Murray, but he and I spoke about this. This was just, you know, we had approval. And Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you can put up the letter that we received from the Department of Ed. So the building committee, you know, we, everybody involved, all the stakeholders that attended our, our meetings to, in every single building, to look at potentials and gave input to our stage one. We did get approval from Department of Education for our stage one submission. And, you know, it was a lot of work. I think you guys remember seeing how thick the binder was. We have one here in our office, so nobody can come and see it right now. But we did want to acknowledge that we received this approval to, to apply, move towards stage two. And I know everybody's saying, well, how would you move towards stage two, based on what we're experiencing? Well, RIDE has given us some flexibility. You know, I think now more than ever, we really need to look at condition of buildings when we talk about the new expectations around disinfecting and sanitizing. And I'm going to tell you, older buildings make it so much more challenging, but RIDE has expanded the timeline. And so I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Murray, if you don't mind, in talking about maybe what we're going to do in terms of our next steps. But my part is, I just wanted to thank everybody, because this was a monumentous task, I think, just to get stage one in. I think the council, you know, all the players, the building committee, obviously, but everybody that had input to getting this approved. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Murray.
Sure. So this is great news. This gets us through the first stage one. We obviously have a stage two, which we've now identified. which we've now identified the need. Now we have to dig down to try to find solutions to that need. And we realize, I've had some discussions with superintendent on this. We all realize this is a tough time. And obviously, put the brakes on a little bit when this whole crisis happens. So I've kind of laid off a little bit on the administration, knowing that they've been very busy with other things. But we can't lose sight of the fact that they're not continually moving the deadlines. They've, if we request the extension, we could go into next spring, which I think is prudent at this point because we've lost a couple of months. But we need to start working again. So I've asked that, you know, I'm going to be meeting with the administration to discuss strategy going forward with potential hiring of the architect, whether we do it in multiple stages due to funding reasons. Start setting up a long-term schedule between now and our hit dates come spring. And then really trying to charge towards those hit dates because, you know, RIDE at some point is going to be inflexible with their dates to submit the stage two. And we want to make sure we move forward with that. And while a lot of people may question whether this is a good time to start improvements or not, it kind of is what it is. The money's out there. We can get the housing aid. There's some kicker still available out of that 250 million. We need to take advantage of this opportunity. If we get the documents and we determine the needs and there's more than we think we can bite off at that certain point, then we'll determine what we want to go for, if anything, at that point. But we at least need to get something to ride to get authorized to get that reimbursement. So I'm very proud of the building committee for getting that stage one and moving that along. I know they're anxious. I've had members reach out to me wondering what is going on. And I am going to provide an update this week. I wanted to wait till this meeting. But, you know, now that we're, we have this stage one, I think we, and it seems like we're, people are starting to normalize the situation. I think we can do some virtual meetings and get back to the table on some planning for this. So if anyone has any questions on it, I'm here or superintendent can answer. So anybody at all? No? So thank you. I think that's about it, Greg.
No, I just think I agree. We're just trying to bring it back forward. And, you know, there's a lot of work that has to go into stage two. And like I said, I think the next step is, we're going to meet myself and Sarah. We'll meet with, you know, some members of the building committee. And then we'll probably schedule a full building committee virtually to come up with a plan that we can present moving forward. So I just again, want to thank everybody. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much to Mr. Levis and Mr. Murray. Was there anything from the public? I don't see any hands raised that anybody had a question for either Mr. Murray or Mr. Levis. So that means we go to number nine, which is the superintendent's report. So you're up again, Mr. Levis.
Sure. So, and I'll try to be brief. So we talked last time about a task force. I need to, you know, I've been doing a lot of reflecting, as I'm sure everybody is, about moving forward. I was kind of alarmed. I went to, we had a superintendent's meeting the other day. And I believe there's a lot of fear, obviously, a lot of fear about reopening, what's going to take place. And many superintendents said they wanted to make a decision by June 15th. And I am not okay with that. I feel that this is moving, things are changing quickly. I want to do due diligence in terms of coming up with scenarios, costing them out and making a decision whether or not, you know, what reopening can look like. Is it in school? Is it partially in school? I mean, and I feel that even July 15th, we may be a moving target. But I felt that's fair because parents, you know, people need to know, am I going to work? What am I going to do? And so one of the things that, and I'm sure as many people, you know, been doing a lot of reading around just crisis in this pandemic and moving forward. And often we have able to go back into history and look at periods and how people attacked certain problems and the lessons learned. And we can incorporate that moving forward. But we're living this right now. We're all experiencing, everybody I speak with has a story. And no two stories are similar. You know, there may be some similarities. But, you know, how your life interfaces with the variables in your house, with your children, with your work, with other people in your life, with the amount of resources or lack of resources is so specific. And what I feel is important is to really learn, it's kind of like if you're familiar with like a phenomenological study, you know, looking at people's lives, lived experiences, but we're doing action research now. So what, and I've had over 100 people in a variety of different forums reach out to me and want to have some input, right? And so what I've decided to do, and I hope that, you know, you agree with this, is I'm working with a couple of people that I've worked with in the past who are helping me develop a survey. And I'll share that survey with our administrators. My goal is to get it completed by this weekend. I want to share a survey of three different versions, one with our students, middle school and high school at least. And I want to know some of the challenges they faced in this. I want to know, you know, some of the, if there's been any positive outcomes because of distance learning with this experience. Then I want to know, looking forward in the future, what their thoughts are, what their takeaways are. I want to do the same with our staff and our parent, you know, one survey. And I want to do the same with parents and caregivers. I think those are three different bodies of experiences that we really need to understand before we move forward. And I believe we have some time to do that. The second part is, and I talked with our central office administrators the other day. But I shared an email with our building base administrators and some of our directors is to, because I want to make sure that we have input from individuals about reopening, that we can bring again to the task force along with this survey information. We're developing focus questions and we want to run focus groups, small focus groups by building and by specific areas. So for instance, special education, preschool, CTE. And we want to keep those groups small, which means we may run multiple groups. But we want to craft four or five focus questions that we can use with each group. So there'll be some consistency. Really looking at moving forward in terms of reopening, what people's thoughts are about that, what their fears are, what are non-negotiables for them. And so with these two bodies of information, I think it's really going to empower our task force moving forward. And the third part is that there's a blueprint, there's different documents out there that are templates in terms of working with a task force. And I've looked at a couple of the models. There's a few models that are being put together with other districts in Rhode Island. And Smithfield has a task force in a model they put together. And I'm going to work with Mr. Murphy on Monday and either create a little website. So I've done a lot of template work, but I want to have a link to our website. And hopefully I can do that by Monday afternoon so people can see this. And so I look at this as being a work of progress over the next two weeks. So that by the time we're out of school, we can have some information to bring forward to the task force. I've identified some individuals, but I, my fear is if I just limit the task force and I have to say no to a lot of people about their input right now as being official member. I know I don't like being told no. So I want to value people's opinions, value people's views and their experience moving forward. So I don't feel the urgency to make a decision by June 15th like many of my colleagues do. I feel that we need to take our time. It needs to be purposeful and it needs to be transparent. So hopefully, I know Smithfield created this really nice website, you know, I don't have the ability. And I know everybody's working full, you know, 100% giving it all the time. But I'm going to try to put something together and, you know, ask for Mr. Murphy's assistance. That'll be user-friendly and you'll get a chance to see what those key areas are that will break a task force up into three major areas. So those are my thoughts. I've shared it with the central office. We spent a lot of time talking about, you know, questions for the focus group. I will share the survey questions out with the school committee and other individuals before I send them out and the focus questions. But I think it's so important again to take advantage of this experience in each one of our lives and to learn from that, to value that. So I want to put the brakes on just a little bit, but I don't think it's, I think it's, the outcome may be well worth it. So. That's my 38 cents. I did share CDC documents with the committee. I can put them in our COVID-19. I will share the blueprint template that I'm using. I'll put that up in our COVID-19 link from the, you know, with, on our website till we create this, this link or permanent website that'll talk about reentry. So. I don't know if Ms. Patno froze again.
Frozen.
Dave, you want to take over?
Sure. Mr. Pearson, you want to go first?
I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Pearson. Ms. Kalounian, do you have any?
I have nothing at this time, Dave. Thank you.
Mr. Murray, do you have anything at this time?
Just that I talked to, I mean, I think this is in keeping with what you talked about before, Greg, on, you know, setting up the task force. We had said last time about setting up a framework for that. It sounds like you're doing that. So that's good. I mean, basically almost like a program evaluation, what you're doing. You know, the only thing I would advise, you know, my two cents is have an open comment area with any survey. So that way we can get some additional unique treatment because as we discussed, I mean, every situation is different. My situation, like me and my wife having two kids can be very different than a single mother, which is different than, you know, somebody at home. So it'll be interested in the feedback. Also, you know, hopefully it will drive some decisions. I mean, obviously, we're going to have the state guidance, federal guidance on how we potentially reopen. But I think it's important what you're doing, which is considering our local strategy to accommodate, you know, our students, our parents, everyone involved. So I fully support the effort. I hope it goes well. If there's anything I or the committee can support. So.
Okay. Mr. Levis, I happen to know Rosemary Sacriano, who is on the Smithfield School Committee. And they are doing some extraordinary things. And they miss you. And I tell them they can't have you back. You are going in the absolute correct way, involving everyone, having parents, having educators, having administrators, police officers, SRP people, teachers. It's extraordinary. And I think you'll get the best out of the people that are willing to serve on this committee because they care. And thank you for doing this.
Yeah, I just want to say, and I don't remember, I apologize. I know one of the committee members said last time. But, you know, which shows I do listen and I do reflect to that, you know, really about getting community input, you know? And that resonated with me because there's this sense of urgency, right? We have this sense of urgency. I need to figure this out. I need to, you know, come up with a solution or potential solutions. We're going to do scenario planning, scenario mapping, because there'll be multiple. But I do believe that community input is so important. You know, we talk about that. We talk about being transparent. And I think never has it been more important than these times. The people feel that they're, that they have a voice. So whoever said that, I appreciate that. It really did resonate with me. And, you know, I look forward to seeing what people have to say. You know, we have to just frame it properly because sometimes when you give people a voice, doesn't mean we can take action on it too. You know, there may be a lot of reasons why. People may have incredibly strong ideas that seem like they'd be incredible solution. But there may be reasons why we can't. So thank you. I know Ms. Patno's back.
Sorry, I have no idea where the conversation ended. All I know is that I lost my internet connection.
The task force, Kathy, with speaking about the importance of the task force and the input from the community into the.
Okay, I assume everybody had their say.
Yes, in short term, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to the new budget calendar for the town council that was part of your report? I don't know. Did you already talk about it and I missed it?
No, no, Madam Chair.
You need to unmute yourself, Mr. Levis.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, no, I can move on to that. I didn't know if any of the public or anybody else had comments to make. I didn't want to.
I figured I'd ask after your report was finished.
Okay. Sorry. I will go into the other part. And Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you can put on the revised budget calendar. So I, while Mr. Murphy's searching for that. When I put this on the agenda, I, you know, if you heard me speak, I have a lot of mixed emotions around, you know, our budget process and how we've worked with the town. I believe we've worked extremely well with the town manager and the finance director. You know, I'm frustrated with the lack of conversation that has taken place during our four meetings with the council in terms of only one council person asked questions about our budget. You know, I have a lot of, like I said, a lot of feelings around the process. But I had a conversation, I said, you know, with Ms. Mangarelli today. And despite the challenges that we face and I've never felt more that I've been true to myself in terms of professional ideals and beliefs than I have been and that we have been as a district and as a school committee through this budget process. We put forward, we've been extremely transparent. We've said, we made an agreement with the town. We responded to the town council president's request. We've met with both of our bargaining units. Very appreciative that everybody signed off. We have an agreement with the collective bargaining agreement with the CTA. We're pretty much ready to bring forward to the school committee an agreement or potential agreement with the SRP. We've highlighted other areas that we've been working on in terms of savings, the virtual net metering, both the electric and gas supply of electric and gas, now with the LED lights. We're working on all kinds of contracts. We're looking at our food service. We've got to take a hard look at our transportation. We're looking at our copiers. We've received multiple grants. You know, I wish I was free to say, but I'm not. There's going to be an announcement. I believe the committee knows, but I can't take away the thunder of the Department of Ed. But there's going to be a significant influx of resources to support a program for early childhood that's going to benefit this community for years, you know, moving forward. There's so much that we have done. We've done a lot of curriculum work. We focused on, you know, increasing professional development. We've, one of our major goals was around social emotional learning. We've been providing supports to many of all of our stakeholders through this pandemic. There's so much that we've done and we've stuck with the budget, knowing that this is the budget we need, especially now. If we are to even have the opportunity to look at opening school. And this isn't, you know, pie in the sky, my head above the clouds. We're real, I'm a realist. I understand this challenging times. I'm hoping that, you know, we haven't heard a lot of complaint. I haven't heard any criticism. We've had meetings. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Last year, there was a lot of criticism. There were a lot of people in favor, but there was a lot of criticism. And I'm hoping that the council, even I had heard that the council president had said, he hasn't heard any. I'm hoping that they will put forward the budget we put forward. Because, you know, we hear a lot of talk about taxpayers. We're all taxpayers. But I'm going to tell you one thing. Last year, there was a lot of talk about people not wanting to move into Coventry. They're talking about people leaving. But I'm going to tell you that I follow the real estate market here very closely. So look at what's happening with houses and not just in the Wood Estates region or, you know, Johnson's Pond or out in Green where you can get a lot of, you know, pristine property. But I'm talking in the neighborhoods, Black Rock, Taiyo, Hopkins Hill. When houses go up for sale, they go up for a price that, for me, and I live in Massachusetts, but blows me away. Because you look at the assessed value, they're in the low 200s. These houses are going for 350, 300 and 300. These houses are going for $350, $360, $370,000 and they're selling in a matter of a week, 10 days. They're booking three, four days of five people coming to see the house each day. You know, there's a bidding war for these homes. People are coming and these aren't retirees that are coming here. They don't come to Coventry, for the most part, I don't think, to retire. They're coming with young families. So I feel that we stayed the course. We've been clear. We've been transparent. There hasn't been dialogue. I'm concerned. I'm concerned that we lived up to our, our agreement. I haven't seen anything come forward with the town. But I'm going to assume the positive that the council will allow the taxpayers, who are also our families and many of our grandparents now are taking care of their children during this pandemic. I'm hoping that they will go forward and put forward our budget to the taxpayers. But I'm concerned about the lack of dialogue. But again, I want to be positive. I'm going to continue to take the high road. And I assume that the council cares about this community too. And they see the same thing that I see, that you see who lives here, you know. So I, I applaud the efforts of everybody. I know there's this challenging times, but we stayed true to our beliefs. And, and this community deserves it. These people that are buying these homes deserve a school department that's moving, continues to grow and, and produce and improve. You know, Don Coward always talks about, you know, the quality improvement, that improvement cycle, inquiry cycle. And that's what we do each and every day. So, you know, I applaud the council, the school committee. I applaud our, our leadership, the union leadership, our, our district leadership, teacher leadership. You know, I applaud the efforts of everybody. And while you have concerns, I feel so good that we stayed the course and that we've been true to our beliefs. You know, win or lose, you know, we can walk with our head high and this community deserves this. And I'm hoping that the council will put forward the budget, you know. Again, the only person I've really spoken to on this is Dr. Dixon. I appreciate her efforts and the questions that she asked. Because I know she shares her thoughts. I believe she shares her thoughts with the other council members. But I, you know, so I'm not going to be doom and gloom. I, I hope that, you know, your constituents, those families reach out to their council members and, you know, share their own beliefs. You know, I'm just the superintendent, but I, you know, I sit here tonight. I'm just proud of how we've handled this process, the work that we've done together. And, you know, we don't always agree, but we work together. We've put aside our differences and we've polarized our efforts. And, you know, but Monday night is, is a big night. There, there is no alternative for me. The alternative is the council puts this forward and lets the taxpayers, that include our families, that include our parents, vote on this. So that's what I wanted to say. Like I said, I had a lot of emotions when I put this up there. I've, I've been extremely frustrated with the lack of communication. There's been a lot of statements made. And I think, you know, one point, you know, we were, you know, informed that potentially there was a document floating around that was recommending. I, I've never seen it or we haven't had that. I've never, no one's ever come out and said, this is what they're going to do to me. You know, people say, oh, how are we going to afford things, you know? And I think Ms. Mangiorelli has spoken a lot about, you know, the savings we may have. We still don't know. We still have to work out details with our transportation. We still don't know when we're getting the money, you know, what money we're going to get. Rhode Island hasn't even requested all of their initial CARE Act funds for, for, you know, there's reasons. They want to know what the stipulations are. But there's so many variables. But we've put forward a budget that we believe we need pre-COVID-19. And there's no scenario moving forward that says going to school next year is going to cost less. No scenarios that I've seen. So I wanted to put that on the agenda again. I, I, I believe that the council will do let the taxpayers make a decision. I do believe that. So that's all I have to say about this.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Is there any comment or questions from Mr. Levis on this particular topic? I'll start with Mr. Pearson.
Any indication what the town manager is recommending for the school committee budget?
No, I, I don't. I don't. I haven't had any indication. And I know, you know, in fairness, like I said, and I, and I said this, I think Mr. Wazika, Mr. Arnett, you know, who's recovered from COVID-19, they've done an outstanding job. We have a great communication. But I, you know, again, I think it's, I've watched their meetings. I listened. It seems like it's up to the, it's going to be up to the council. It'll be interesting. I don't know. I hope, you know, maybe tomorrow I can find out, but I don't know what, what he's going to recommend. And, and I request the same. You know, our conversations have been the same. That what I'm sharing here, hopefully it's no secret to anybody that's been in conversations with me publicly, privately. We've been consistent. I've been consistent. So the answer is no, Mr. Pearson.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Colonian? Yes, Mr. Levis, what times, what time is the meeting on Monday and what time is the meeting on June 23rd? Do they give a time?
I haven't seen the posting yet for Monday. So I assume it's, it has to be posted by tonight. So maybe Mr. Pearson can find it for us or anybody that is out there could find it. But I can, I can share that. I can put it, you know.
No, that's, I'll go, I'll go on.
I don't know. I know. I went on before it wasn't posted earlier.
Yeah, I didn't know if they told you that.
Six o'clock, Monday.
Six o'clock. Right. So, you know, I would encourage you people to show, you know, to, to show up. But, and I don't know the 23rd. I mean, we'll, we'll talk about that probably on the 11th when we meet. I'll, I'll work with Ms. Mangiorelli and put together, you know. It'll be either, it'll be a very short presentation either way. But, you know, if, if they cut us significantly, you know, I, I can only speak for myself what my, my, my thoughts would be. I think that, that, you know, I, I don't know how we would even enter opening school. And, and again, I am not trying to, I don't like fear. I'm dealing with a situation now where people are trying to use fear. It's not, you know, I, I don't want to do that. I'm just trying to be realistic when I'm told that every scenario moving forward is going to cost more. You know, Ripec had a meeting today and that's, that comes up constantly. So we need what we've asked for. We've been transparent about it. We've shared why we need what we need. We've encouraged anybody to ask questions about it. So.
Apologies, I do have an additional follow-up question, although you mentioned the 23rd. Article out this week regarding Situate. Situate was planning to hold a financial town meeting and the Department of Health stepped in and said, no, they cannot do it as they had planned. So has there been any communication from the town side as to what their plans are to hold a financial town meeting?
No, Mr. Pearson. I, again, I can have that conversation with, with Mr. Wazika. I mean, there's been, there's been talk, there's been conversations, but the conversations are some people want a town meeting. But I think it's going to be based on, again, what the Department of Health will allow. But then again, there's been court junctions in other states that have allowed these type of gatherings. So I don't know, but I will get an answer. I believe in listening to one of the meetings, there was a hope that there was going to, something was going to take place to put the whole budget out to some point. I don't know if that would take away the, you know, the, the, the ability to have a town meeting, though I've also heard that whatever the executive orders can't impact the town charter. So, but I'll get more information and I'll share that with the community, with the committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levis. Mrs. Colonian? I just went. I'm good. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Murray?
So the lack of communication also bothers me because it seemed like we had a lot of communication going back and forth. And then it seems to have suddenly halted where we don't have an indication of where people stand, what's going to get recommended. Are we going to go forward at zero? Are they going to get, you know, yeah, they allow us to go forward. And, you know, being quite honest, I'm not crazy about the format of councils' meetings anyway because they'll push the community comments to the end. And even in our own presentation, we were, you know, kind of pushed aside to some extent. We finally were allowed to speak. But to talk our own budget and, you know, freedom lies in being bold. And I think, you know, some of it has to be some bold action. And I know that they're listening to constituents, probably emailing them and maybe a few. But I don't know if they're hearing a full view of what the town sentiment is on this. And, and I agree, letting it go to a town vote, which is all purpose of a financial town meeting. The council basically making that decision in advance doesn't allow for the public to really weigh in. So I'm hoping they'll allow it to move forward. I think we all are. I think I'm very proud of our team that we've all stuck together with the, the budget. Having just went through Warwick's budget meetings, I had to listen to hours of testimony from Phil Thornton and Tony Ferrucci on Warwick School District. A lot of the similar questions came up. People are going to be questioning the savings, you know, bus transportation activities, things like that. And everyone's going to think that's a silver bullet to the budget to level fund. And, you know, as we said again and again, we don't know what we don't know. So I really hope that we are on the side of caution because, and I think everyone needs to understand that. And, and I guess what I'm asking, and hopefully someone on the council is hearing this, is, you know, allow us to choose to defend our own budget at the financial town meeting. If people have questions, let us stand up and answer them. Let us try to guide this through the financial town meeting. Because we could leave ourselves seriously short. And as you said, Mr. Levis, we could be setting ourselves up for a situation come September that if we grab all these quote unquote savings now and stimulus doesn't come through, you know, that's hoped. We may be in a short situation to start the school year with additional mandates. If we end up in a better position, I say good for us. We have a, you know, we've talked again and again about a structural deficit. Well, if you're going in already with a tight budget and structural deficit, if we're actually able to catch up next year, good for us. Finally. You know, finally, we may actually have some funding to put in the capital and some other, some other realms. But running everything on a, on this thin line year after year is absolutely killing us. And for some reason, you know, I don't know, it's, it's very sexy to say to towns, zero, zero, you know, level funded this year, we're in crisis. And I get it. But you're only kicking the can down to a larger tax increase in the future because I don't see a cost of things going down. So, you know, there's my little soapbox, but that's what I'm going to be on moving forward. And at the financial town meeting, you know, we're going to find out come Monday. If we get caught, I can say for myself, and I'm going to say to the public, the votes are going to come down the way they come down. If you like a program and it gets cut, I personally don't want to hear it. We'll talk to council. Because we're, we set a budget based on appropriate level of education that funds the programs that we think are important and we think are enriching to our student population. If council doesn't agree with that and they cut it, I'm just going to point back and say, they're the ones who cut it. And I have to make the tough decision in addition to my team here on what we cut. And they're not going to be easy decisions, but we're going to have to make them anyway. So, you know, and that's the same thing I'll say at the financial town meeting. We'll make the cuts. But, you know, as far as complaining about what they are, personally, I don't want to hear it anymore. You know, I'm tired of this ping ponging around year after year. So, you know, when it comes to Monday, I hope, again, I hope council's listening. Think long and hard before you vote. That's my, that's my soapbox for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Florio?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I've been scrolling through the people who have been listening. And I noticed, I noticed there is a member of the council who is listening to this conversation and listening to this meeting, Dr. Ann Dixon. I hope the council is going to do the right thing. Because Luke is absolutely correct. If they don't, then they're going to have to deal with the parents. They're going to have to deal with the grandparents. And like Mr. Levis said, they may have, not only are they going to see problems financially, but they will see their property values go down. And that doesn't help anyone, Madam Chair. That hurts the community. Community is education. The education of children is the foundation of any community. And if you have good schools, you get good property values. I mean, that's, that's all I have to say. I'd like to sell my home someday, but, you know, I'll, I'll stick it out. I'm going to stick it out here as long as I can. And I love Coventry. I love our community. And I don't think what's happening is fair at all. So that's all I have to say, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Quite honestly, I was kind of surprised to see this new budget calendar. From what we've seen previously from the council, I will not be surprised if on Monday they set another budget calendar and go forward till July 1. They won't be alone on that. I think Mr. Pearson is correct. They're not going to allow us to have a referendum, an all-day referendum unless it's somehow done remotely. And I'm not sure that's going to happen. So even the governor, basically, I think in questioning today or yesterday, basically said that they're not going to know about the federal budget, you know, how much may be coming our way until the end of June. And I, I don't want to paraphrase what Mr. Wazika has said in the past, but there has been some discussion previously about pushing the date as far forward as possible. So like I said, even though they have a, an agenda and a supposed, you know, published calendar, we've seen that twice before and it's been pushed off. So I will not be surprised if the same thing happens on Monday. Again, I think they, I do believe they want the best for schools. I do believe they know we need the extra, just the pre-COVID budget just to survive next year. Because any savings that we do in fact have from this year, we're just going to plug holes of how much it's going to cost for COVID protection for our students in the fall if we in fact do reopen. So, you know, I think we're, we're on, we're on a balancing tightrope right now. We're not sure what's going to happen. But obviously, I think the point that we're going to come out and vote, I do believe the community will support schools like they did last year. And I think the town council knows this and I think they'd like to probably push the date again. I could be wrong, but I was surprised to see the present town. That being said. I would like to put it out to the public and ask if anybody had any questions for the first part of Mr. Levis's presentation, which was on the task force and/or any question about the budget moving forward from the town council. I don't see any hands raised. Perhaps Mr. Murphy could let me know.
There's no one.
All right, thank you. Okay, then I think we can go to citizens' comments. Perhaps there are some citizens that would like to comment. So again, I would ask you to use the raise hand feature. You can find that when you look at the participants underneath the middle of the screen when you're at your Zoom setting. I don't.
No hands. No hands.
Thank you. That being said, entertain a motion to schedule our next meeting. Mr. Florio, if that's you trying to talk, you need to unmute.
Hold on, Madam Chair.
I'll do the motion.
Okay, we got it.
Okay.
Can you hear, can you hear Dave?
Yes.
Okay, here we go, Madam Chair. Thank you, Maggie. Okay, I make a motion that the next meeting of the virtual, the next virtual meeting of the school committee be held on. the next virtual meeting of the school committee be held on Thursday, June 11th at, what time?
6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, the adjournment, I have 7:10. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn at 7:10 PM.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you for, everyone for tuning in and we'll see you next time. And hopefully you'll all stay tuned to the council on Monday.
Yes, see you Monday.
Yeah.
Have a good night.